I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I didn't check to see who was here yet. Mr. Danker, would you do the roll call, please?
Councilmember Waller.
She's coming on right now.
King.
She's not here yet.
Pashusta.
Present.
Fisher.
Present.
Baskin.
Present.
Helly.
Present.
Mayor Steem.
Present.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Present.
I'm gonna guess these other two are gonna show up.
Yeah.
There's Steve.
Do we have any, anybody else in? There's Steve.
Yep, just wanna, and Rebecca's getting in.
Okay, so.
Councilmember King, you here?
I'm here.
Alrighty. Just waiting for Rebecca, which looks like she's Belle, I think.
Yeah, that's her. Where's Rebecca?
She's Belle.
Belle is her.
Bottom left corner.
You have a quorum, Your Honor, if you wanna start, if you wanna wait for it.
Alright, Rebecca'll hop in, I'm sure she's probably listening. Okay, we have a lot of stuff tonight. Item number one is adoption of the agenda with the two additions. We need a motion for adoption of the agenda.
Sobo.
Is there a second?
Paul Fisher's second.
She says it's not letting her join in.
Tell her to go back out and come back in. I can't.
Is there, should we wait?
You had a motion and a second.
We have a motion and we do have a second?
Paul Fisher's seconded, yep.
Okay, then go through it.
Uh, Councilmember Waller. Councilmember King.
Aye.
Pashusta. Councilmember Pashusta. Approving the minutes. I'm sorry, approving the agenda.
Oh, aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember at Large Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes, Your Honor.
Okay, uh, Rebecca's on now. Yeah, Rebecca, are you on now?
I am, yep, I finally got on.
Okay, well, note that Rebecca Waller is here.
Rebecca, you vote aye on the adoption of the agenda?
Um, aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Item two is a motion approving the minutes from July 6, 2020. We need a motion.
Sobo.
Is that second? Tom?
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin. Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number three hundred, recognitions and awards. We have our friend Elizabeth Waifel here. Elizabeth, I might not be here the next time you come down, so if I don't, adios. Let's hear what you got to say. Where are we at?
Don't, don't make her cry, Tom. Come on, don't make her cry.
I'm not running for anything, so I can say anything I want now.
Okay, I'm just gonna leave those right there.
No, no, we want you to make your presentation.
No, no, no.
Yeah, I didn't wanna embarrass you.
Okay, so you need to be on a mic or, oh, sorry. I apologize.
Put on the Elmo for her, Tom.
And I remembered to bring a copy that we could use with the Elmo.
Good, good, good.
So can you see it? Okay.
Are you gonna be back in the next six months?
They'll, they'll see the copy on the shared screen, and then the members here will see it on the.
It's alright.
It's big up here, too, I guess. So, um, you know, I don't know, we will, we may come back after the election. I hear you're.
Yeah, hopefully, maybe I'll be up there, maybe I'll.
We hear you're retiring, which is just really good for you, sad for us, you know.
You know, all our meetings are Zoom now, so I don't get up there, so I'm sorry about that, but it's been fun. You've been a very good representative for the Coalition.
Well, thank you, and you've been a great board member, so. As the mayor said, my name is Elizabeth Waifel, and I am one of the attorney lobbyists with the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, and every summer we come out and visit our members. Um, right now, actually, you know, I've been doing this for about a decade. I've been seeing the mayor for about a decade, and again, it's kinda sad losing him, but one of the things we've seen over that last decade or so is actually growth in our organization. We're up to about 102 cities. You can see the pinpoints across the state. Most of you are familiar with the organization, but if you're not, we work together, all of our cities, on a number of issues that affect rural Minnesota. LGA being the top one, but economic development, annexation of land use, transportation, environment, and energy, and we also do some labor and employment work, and that's actually coming to play quite a bit during the pandemic. You know, normally, I would stand up here, tell you about all the things we were planning to do this session, and then tell you how we got them done, but let me tell you, the pandemic really has sort of shattered our expectations and shifted our workload. Went into session, it was gonna be a short session, big budget surplus, you know, how do we give that back with taxes and spending, and, you know, and a bonding bill, but the reality was, is that, um, the, you know, we had a session where there was no in-person legislative meetings, two special sessions and counting. A surplus became a deficit. There was the battle over the apportionment of federal aid. Civil unrest and policing reforms have taken center stage at the Capitol. Battle lines have been drawn over the executive powers, and the bonding bill is still tied up, and when I say still tied up, I mean literally on the House floor as we speak. This is, and if you look at this, you may see yourself in the audience, but you remember back to March 11th? That was the Legislative Action Day. It really was the last normal day of session. The, we didn't know it then, but the CGMC was one of the last organizations that was able to hold a legislative day and go in and talk to legislators, because by that Friday, things started shutting down, and by that Monday, they'd basically gone into hiatus. Goals. Pre-COVID, our goals were pretty simple. We wanted a bonding bill of at least $1.5 billion. We wanted to try and do some inflation and population growth, changes on LGA, build on our childcare progress, and advance some strategies on PFOS chemicals. After COVID, those goals shifted. Again, large bonding bill's still important, but wanted to make sure that there was CARES Act support for our local governments, try to deal with the new and exacerbated childcare challenges, make sure that small businesses were getting grants, and work proactively to protect LGA. Another thing we did, and I had mentioned, you know, the labor and employment work, you know, we kind of actually, our labor and employment team really stepped up along with our environmental and other attorneys, and really, you know, provide a lot of resources for our people. Hosted seminars, sent multiple informational emails, created a website, hosted a webinar on the state budget, surveyed city leaders about what their top concerns were, increased production of our CGMC in brief to twice a week, and also hosted a Zoom meeting with Governor Walz to talk about the pandemic. But let's talk about the first thing we really worked on, the CARES Act, and most of you are probably familiar with it, though it was created through the Federal Coronavirus Relief Fund, and it provided payments to state, local, and tribal governments for dealing with the impact of the COVID-19 epidemic. Need a little bit about the timeline. You know, the act itself passed in late March, and early April, a couple weeks later, Minnesota received $1.8 billion. Challenge was, is that the federal government gave very, very vague guidance on how that was supposed to be distributed to local governments, so, you know, not, our organization is never one to take things lying down, so, you know, we worked and pushed forward with some of the other local government groups to meet with the Department of Revenue and legislative leaders to discuss how it should be distributed to our communities. And, you know, in specials, it didn't happen during the regular session. Then our first special session, we again worked with the Department of Revenue on a final distribution formula, but at the end of the day, the legislature didn't pass it. It ended up okay for us, because at the end of June, the governor did distribute it according to that formula that we came up with, and we were very happy that that formula stuck, because it did provide, you know, funding to our communities. Right here, what you'll see is basically how the CARES Act was distributed and what would have happened with Austin under various scenarios. In the House regular session, the House proposed a, you know, a formula that not a lot went to our cities. The Senate actually put a lot more towards the cities, and the compromise, you know, as often happens, is in between, but it resulted in about, you know, a little over $1.9 million for the city of Austin, and that was, again, what was, would have happened in special session, but, you know, eventually, that's what's getting distributed. And if you're wondering why it kind of ducked down from the Senate formula, basically what happened was, is the Senate proposal was a lot more focused on cities, and there was more of a focus on counties and some of the other formulas, so kind of balanced that out. I do, before moving on to our next topic, wanna just tell you that there are, you know, it's a little confusing what to do with the care resources. Minnesota Department of Revenue, US Department of Revenue have all the good resources out there. The League has also put together an FAQ if you have questions. But moving on to the care, from the CARE Act to what had been our top priority and continues to be a top priority is a bonding bill, and I know that Austin has, you know, its own projects that it was trying to get through. A lot of our cities did, and then we had our overall CGMC goals, and that includes $1.5 billion bill at least, with money for wastewater, for the BDPI, for childcare facilities, public infrastructure to support housing, as well as local roads and bridges. And, you know, this was our goal at the beginning of session, but the importance of this became even more clear as the pandemic sort of came to the forefront, because bonding is really one of the few sort of pure stimulus kind of things that our government can do, and we think it was really important to try and get something passed to meet, you know, the needs of our communities like Austin. We are very, very engaged in, you know, from the get-go on really pushing hard for a larger bill, participating in the bonding tours in the fall. We held a press conference right at the beginning of session. Our Legislative Action Day bonding was a key focus. You know, and as soon as things started closing up a little bit, we put a letter out there calling for, you know, bonding to be mission critical, just a lot of different things, press conferences, letters, editorials, that kept going and continue to keep going. Unfortunately, we still haven't seen a bonding bill yet. There's been some movement back and forth. This morning, Representative Doubt said that they were not gonna be passing a bonding bill today, so unless things changed while I was driving down here, somewhat skeptical that it will happen this session. We are going to continue to push on this, because we do think it is one of the most important things that the state needs to do, and that they really just need to come together, and actually, if you look at our June thing, we did a press release in which President Milson called it a train wreck, and we actually received nationwide attention for that. It made it into papers, not just across the state, but across the country, because of what a severe situation it was. There was a bonding bill unveiled last week. It was $1.35 billion, again, with money for our top priorities except for childcare facilities, but this legislation has really become tied to other issues, and that's why we haven't seen passage yet. We will continue to try and push for passage of this, because it is that important, but as of, you know, right now, 5:30, no bonding bill yet. Sorry. Now, a complete topic change to per and polyfluoral alkyl substances. I'm not gonna have a spelling test on that for you later, but I can say it, because I have been spending an inordinate amount of time working on this issue as the environmental lawyer, but what PFOS are, are they're, they're forever chemicals, and it's kind of the stuff, you know, that, that makes your pots, you know, not stick, and it's on the microwave popcorn bags and a whole, you know, firefighting foam. It's a lot of different products. Problem is, is that once that chemical's out there, it sticks around forever, and it's showing up in water all over the place, and removing from drinking water is expensive. Our, you know, member city Bemidji is experiencing that right now. The bigger challenge is, is if you have it in your wastewater at too high of amounts, it's not technologically feasible right now to remove it from wastewater, and, you know, we began recognizing that last year, as, you know, our wastewater operators from across the state kind of said, hey, I'm starting to get worried about this, because people are talking about it, and we can't get it out of our water if it's there. So we actually decided to be proactive about this and put together a proactive strategy that we called the Municipal Source Reduction Initiative. We called up the League to get them to partner with us on this, and created a three-pronged approach. Identify the main sources, identify how to reduce it in wastewater, and try to educate wastewater professionals and the public about ways to prevent it from entering the wastewater stream. We asked for $500,000 for this initiative, but, you know, like many activities seeking money this year, kind of once the pandemic hit and it became clear what was gonna happen to the state budget, it just wasn't, we weren't gonna get a lot or any money for it. It wasn't the only PFOS bill that we spent a lot of time on. I actually spent a lot of time on bills that were not good, and in your packet that you should have received electronically, plus I'm leaving paper copies, there's a full-page description of all of our environmental bills and information on PFOS, so. It is something that we know will be, continue to be an issue, so it will be a top environmental priority for 2021, and if you have questions, you can call me about it. Childcare. This has become a top priority over the last several years, and going into the session, we had great hopes. We had two main priorities, trying to get money for childcare grants, as well as for the initiative foundations, but the, you know, we weren't the only ones pushing for this. The House DFL made childcare one of their top priorities, and they wanted $500 million for early childhood and childcare, and included our proposals. But then COVID happened, and, you know, budget deficits have, you know, a way of changing things. This talks a little bit about, you know, how we reacted during this, or, excuse me, how the state reacted during this. They did allocate emergency funds to childcare providers, with a big chunk of that in greater Minnesota. Not a lot happened, you know, after that in the regular session, but special session, we're, you know, there, money put to, through federal funds to increase the CCAP rates, additional emergency funds were put forward for childcare providers, but we're still not sure what's gonna happen next, and this is gonna be an issue, and it is something we are gonna continue to work on, because it really is an acute problem in greater Minnesota. But that 40,000, you know, childcare slot deficit that's out there is expected to grow, so again, it's gonna be an important issue for us. You know, those weren't the only issues that we worked on, but a lot of, a lot of like housing, transportation, and other things like that, that we tried to work on, again, just, those priorities changed, and we'll, you know, we'll be back next year talking about what we're doing on those, but, you know, had to adjust to the times, but if you have more questions about them, a lot of details are in the report. But looking ahead for the rest of the year, state budget. You know, the state took the unusual step of doing, you know, or, excuse me, the normal step was they did a state budget forecast in February, a $1.5 billion surplus.
No, but it's not part I'm really concerned about.
In, is that a question? Okay. In, in May, the state took the unprecedented step of issuing a budget projection. That doesn't typically happen, and it showed a $2.4 billion deficit, and almost immediately, because we think it's important, we sent a letter to the governor and the legislature and issued a press release calling for LGA to be paid on time and in full. Remember that phrase, because that's gonna be really important over the next year. On time and in full. In fact, we know we did get attention, because the governor's press conference that day, he actually got asked about our letter by one of the press corps. We are anticipating another updated budget projection. It might be August, it might be September, but we are expecting something of that to happen, as we get a better picture of what's going on as a result of the pandemic. With respect to the state budget, there's a couple different options that the state could be taking to address. You know, they may decide to deal with the budget deficit during an upcoming special session. They may decide to wait until the regular session in 2021. Or we could be looking at a scenario, for those of you who were here, you know, a decade ago, it could be a situation where the governor's looking at using the unallotment powers, but I can tell you that through all of that, and no matter what scenario we're looking at, ensuring that LGA is paid on time and in full is our top priority. I mean, that is just on time, in full. It's our slogan. We just think it is really important, because it is such a crucial part of, you know, all of our communities' budgets and how they, how they get it done.
It should be everybody's top priority right now, I think, as far as cities.
Yeah, yeah. It is, it's a huge, it is a huge priority. This graph is just kind of a reminder of, you know, what that looks like with the 2020 and 2021 LGA. As you may remember, last session, we were able to push through another increase to LGA, finally getting it back up to that 2002 level, and there is a slight increase this year due to the way they staggered the increase, so that's like about, I think, you know, it's, that's kind of the estimated LGA. I think your final number, my understanding, is I got a call on the way down here, so it was too late to change my chart, as you're actually getting a little bit more than that, but it should be pretty close to about what we're looking at. Looking ahead, you know, we've got an election in November. Both the Senate and the House are up, and that could shift the dynamics. I am not gonna kid you. I don't, I don't know who's gonna be controlling the legislature come January, but it will have an impact on what's going on. The pandemic may and probably will continue to impact the economy and the legislative process. Protecting LGA will be our top priority. It is looking more and more like we will be pushing for a bonding bill at the beginning of the year. Again, we're not giving up hope, and we think they should get a bonding bill done now, but if it doesn't, we'll be pushing for that at the beginning of session. But right now, what we are working on, you know, normally, we'd be done with everything, and we'd be all about preparing for the next session. We're kind of in a situation where we're both dealing with a special session, as well as getting ready for that next session, because our groundwork starts now for a successful 2021. Upcoming events. If you haven't registered yet, encourage you to register for our membership meeting next week. We've got our Fall Conference scheduled for Willmar in November, Legislative Action Day in January, and then our Summer Conference was supposed to be in Red Wing last summer, and should be in Red Wing next summer.
Are the, is the Fall Conference gonna be a regular conference or Zoom?
We, I talked to Julie about that, 'cause I knew I would get that question. She said we'll be making that decision around Labor Day. It's kind of the latest, it just.
That's for all of these meetings?
I mean, yeah, it's gonna, you know, it is one of those things where, you know, we've got contracts in place, and so you have to look at, at what point can we, you know, cancel before really taking a bath, you know, so.
It'd be a shame if you couldn't do it.
Yeah, you know, and honestly, our Fall Conference, if you haven't been to that yet, I would strongly encourage it. It is, it has become our most popular event. Actually, Legislative Action Day is probably the most, but our Fall Conference has become more and more popular. We've had, you know, over, over 100 people or more showing up, and it really is about, you know, getting ready for the next legislative session, you know, once we know where the election is sort of steering us, as well as getting a chance to get to know, you know, your fellow city council members and city staff from other cities, you know, because, you know, that ability to work together is really, really important, so I'm hoping we can do it in person, because it is really, you know, it is a really good event.
More information, if like a city council person or mayor goes, you could talk to people, you know, that have done, like checking ordinances and stuff that we're looking at. It's invaluable, really. These conferences have been one of my favorite things.
Yeah, yeah, and we'll miss you at them, and we hope that the rest of you pick up the, you know, the torch and come to these. I was actually looking at my Facebook page today, and I switched out my profile picture, because I think it was six years ago, we were here for the annual conference, and there's a picture of me with a large can of Spam, but it was a very well, was it six years?
Like four years.
Was it four years?
Well, but four.
Okay, maybe it was four, four years ago. I can't remember. Oh, it was 2016, so that was four years ago.
One of the best conferences ever.
It was one of the best conferences ever. We, we got to play bingo, we got to do a bike ride and around your lovely city. It was, it was, it was excellent. It was, really was a great conference.
Our people did a great job with that.
Yes. Um, so I'm gonna close out, you know, first of all, by saying thank you. Big thank you to the mayor. You know, he's been on the board for quite a while, you know, was in the officer position as well, and is really, you know, it is, our organization has been able to accomplish a lot, because we have strong leaders like Mayor Steem, and, you know, he's not the only one. Craig Clark's been very active, but I know a lot of our ear city council members have, you know, come to our events. Austin's been a real strong member, you know, as long as I've been at the firm, and it is that sort of level of activity that allows us to get things done, and it really is, you know, it, you know, there are, there are some things that all cities have in common, but there's other things that it really are, you know, sort of about greater Minnesota, and it is that sort of working together with those other communities across the state that, you know, that's why LGA's still there, and that is, you know, the, making progress on a lot of these other issues that are sort of unique to greater Minnesota. It is that working together, so, big, big thank you to you, mayor. You'll be missed, but we look forward to working with your successor, so.
Oh, sounds like we're having a crime committed base.
Uh-oh. But again, thank you to everybody else for all the work you do, Craig, others, and, and just stay in touch. We're, we continue to sort of expand and work on how we stay in touch with members. Our website, again, we've got all those COVID resources, other resources, Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube even, if you wanna watch some of the things we've been doing, but if you ever have questions, though, always feel free to give me or any of my folks a call. You know, if your question's about annexation, land use, environment, call me, LGA, call Bradley, transportation, call Shane, childcare, call Scott, you know, any of us, we're happy to talk to you, so, thank you.
I think the Coalition is one of the best bang for the bucks we get. You're very good at what you're doing. I know LGA, I don't know where LGA would be right now if I had, you know, if we hadn't had the Coalition to help us the last number of years. Counsel, does anybody have any questions or comments for Elizabeth? If not, I wanna thank you, and I wanna thank the Coalition, and Carrie, I, keep going. It's, you know, you talk about childcare and stuff, but it's hard to push stuff now, 'cause you, we're in a whole different world, and we need somebody like you, and I'm glad we have you.
Great.
Alright?
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Hopefully, next year, we'll see all of you.
Okay, what was that, number three, number four? We need a motion for the consent agenda. Sobo, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Danker.
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Under petitions and requests, number five is a motion approving a request for two parking stalls for an electronic vehicle charging station. Alex, who's Alex?
Alex Bumgarner, Austin.
Oh, Alex Bumgarner, go ahead. We talked about this, I think, at our work session last time, but go ahead and then give us your take.
Yep, so, good evening, everybody.
Hi, Alex.
Can't hear ya.
Um, Austin Utilities is seeking approval from the council this evening.
Alex, you need to speak up for a little bit.
To construct the charging state.
Alex, your internet and your voice is not coming through real clear.
Can you hear me?
Uh, in bits and pieces.
Can you hear me?
In bits and pieces, Alex.
You need to do better.
Can I just make a suggestion?
We're open. Yes.
Maybe somebody else could just summarize Alex's request quickly, 'cause I think we're all pretty familiar with it.
Right, and we talked about this at the, at the last work session. I believe we were very much in favor of it. Counsel, why don't we just go forward with the motion?
I'll make the motion to make two stalls in the city lot to be electric vehicles.
Is there a second?
Second.
Anybody wanna say anything? Otherwise, Mr. Danker, let's do the roll.
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, Your Honor. Alex, you're good.
Okay, Alex, yeah.
And you're frozen, yeah. I see your armpit.
We don't know what you said, but it worked pretty good. Okay, we'll move on to number six, I believe, with the motion approving a second quarter payment to the YMCA. We also discussed this at length at the last work session. Kevin, is Kevin here?
Diane.
Oh, Kevin, oh, that Kevin, okay, Kevin.
Diane Wazir presented a good case for their, for their need and for their ongoing work in terms of even if they're not able to provide all of the services to the kids coming through the door, or the, but based upon how they're able to comply, it sounded as though the council was supportive of providing the second quarter payment in full.
I thought she was very effective, and I think council voiced that they were supportive of that. With that, we need a resolution. Motion.
Sobo.
Motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, your honor.
Thank you. Seven is a resolution approving a memorandum of agreement required for applying for funding for the J.C. Home and Nature Center to the Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails Commission. Kevin.
This is a resubmit of an application to, to get funding for positions that has been acquired in the past and based upon how they weren't able to follow through with what was done this last time. He's resubmitting the application.
Counsel, are there any questions or comments? If not, we need a resolution for number seven. So move the resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, your honor.
Thank you. Number eight is a resolution accepting and allocating cares funding for the state of Minnesota. Mr. Clark.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Members, city has received or has applied for our share of 841 million in per capita funding. City of Austin is eligible for a little over 1.9 million in COVID-related expenses related to the federal distribution that came down through the states. There's three competing interest criteria tests that the acceptance of those funding fall under. One, that it be necessary related to COVID. Two, that it's not unaccounted for expenses. And three is that it's within the designated time period. Two of the three seem to be what, somewhat contradictory, but we did a lot of work trying to work with the League of Minnesota Cities, Minnesota Management and Budget, U.S. Treasury Department, Congressional Delegation Individuals, and National League of Cities to reconcile those two. Essentially, what it comes down to is that our public safety expenses may be presumed that payroll costs for public health, public safety employees are payments for services that are substantially dedicated to mitigating or responding to the COVID-19 public health emergency. So under that basis, we're recommending that council go ahead and designate our allocation for cares funding going to public safety and approving the resolution that outlines those facts. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Counsel, any questions or comments? If there are none, we need a resolution. So move the resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, your honor.
Thank you. Nine is a resolution approving an on-sale liquor license for Austin Minnesota Junior Hockey LLC. Self-explanatory. Do you have any questions? If not, we need a resolution for number nine.
So move.
Is there a second? Second. Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, your honor.
Thank you. Ten is a resolution approving a contract for materials testing with American Engineering and Testing on the Turtle Creek Two Sanitary Sewer Project, Mr. Lang.
Yes, that pretty much explains it. In order to do some testing for the backfill, backfill material, we want to utilize American Engineering and Testing in the amount of $2,105 for the testing and we'd recommend approving this. It will be funded through our Turtle Creek Two Sanitary Sewer Project.
Counsel, any questions or comments? If not, we need a resolution for number 10.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, your honor.
Thank you. Number 11 is a resolution approving deed restrictions on 509 South Main Street. Mr. Lang.
Back in June, council approved a grant with the DNR for acquisition of this property at 509 South Main Street. And as part of the agreement documents, we need to assign these deed restrictions to the property indicating that the money that we use from the state that we will continue to own the property and maintain it in a clear manner. At some point in the future, if we'd ever sell it, the money has to be given back to the state, which is, be a very cumbersome process to document. So these deed restrictions will hold it in the city property for, forever possibly to be used as expansion of our park space that we have on South Main Street.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? If not, we need a resolution for 11.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, your honor.
Thank you. 12 is a motion reviewing a fence appeal from Chris Suchek and Kelly Anderson. Where's Holly? Holly? Ms. Wallace?
Yes, uh, yes. During the July 14, 2020 meeting of the Austin Planning Commission, the commission reviewed offense appeals submitted by Chris Suchek and Kelly Anderson. The petitioners are adding some fencing around their property, portion of which is six-foot privacy fence, which extends into their 12 and a half foot setback for their side yard, which is a little larger because it's a corner lot. The section of privacy fence in question is between their house and garage. The planning commission reviewed the matter, taking into consideration impacts on safety, neighboring properties, public right of way, and just a review of the general reasonableness of the petitioner's request and voted seven to zero to recommend approval of the request to council.
Counsel, do you have any questions? If not, we need a resolution for 11.
So move.
Is there a second? Second. Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, your honor.
Thank you. 13 is a series of motions granting the planning and zoning department the power to contract for the removal of junk and/or illegally stored vehicles in the following locations. A, 1207 10th Street Northeast, the Tasker Property, we need a motion.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, your honor.
B, 614, 616, 618, 10th Drive Southeast, the Classic Property, we need a motion. So move. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, your honor.
Thank you. And finally, 904 10th Avenue West, the Sunbeam, the Sunbelt Motors Property, we need a motion. So move. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, your honor.
Thank you. Number 14 is a motion approving Yang Lu to the Culver and Arts Commission term expiring 12/31/20. We just need a motion, or, yeah, we need a motion.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, your honor.
Okay, the last item we have is a resolution recommending face covering to combat COVID-19. I'd just like to say something before we go and then we'll go around and everybody can talk if they want. But we have this resolution. Obviously, I think it's the right thing to do. The arguments, we, we have a lot of arguments against face masks. I know, we've been hearing a lot from people. All we're doing is making a recommendation. And I think we need to challenge people at this point. We need to challenge the people in Austin to start wearing face masks. We have a police chief that's been keeping count and he knows about the percentage that people are wearing now. If we come up with this, if we do this resolution, we challenge people, in two weeks' time, we'll see if it's made a difference. At that time, I think we can argue for and against the face mask ordinance. That's just my opinion. Tom, why don't we go around? I'm sure everybody has an opinion on this.
Councilmember Waller.
Um, yeah, obviously, everyone's getting the emails that we're all getting. I'm, I'm really, I don't know if I'm for or against it quite yet. I really think it should be left up to retailers and that's resort because enforcing face mask coverings is really hard to do. And not every employer, every retail business or inside place can handle something like a mandate. So recommendation is okay. I'm okay with that, but I'm not necessarily okay with recommending we all go to face coverings quite yet.
Now, that's not...
Indoors.
And Rebecca, that's not what this does, obviously. It's just a very strong request. Thank you. Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Councilmember King.
I agree with the resolution at this point, that we strongly encourage folks to, to wear the mask. I'm a big mask proponent. I feel that the resolutions in order versus a mandate at this point for a couple of reasons. The first is that I'm interested in seeing what the effect of having Walmart and Walgreens and Lowe's and Home Depot and all these other bigger businesses go with the mandate. And to see that as an experiment of what I hope is positive, because I think there's a lot of folks that, that could rebel against that. And it'd be interesting to see how these, these go in the next two weeks, these businesses that I, I really am encouraged to see that they're taking the lead on it. Second, I would say that I hate to put our PD in a predicament for the enforcement of mandate when you, when I do realize there's going to be a portion of the public that will rebel against it. And I hate to put our officers in a position where they're potentially going hands-on or something nasty with, with someone who's rebelling against that mandate for what reason. I don't think we'll have a lot of teeth in it. I like the idea of having the businesses regulate and legislate this because if they choose not to serve somebody wearing a mask, much like they wouldn't serve somebody wearing shoe, without shoes or a shirt, then we have a trespass statute and that I can deal with. And there's certainly teeth in that statute for trespassing, more so than would be an ordinance of a mandate. I just think at the right time, I'm interested in seeing this, this experiment of, of the Walmarts going on their own. And then again, the, the potential for a real hard time enforcing it would be reason why I support the resolution at this point.
Councilmember Pashusta.
Why do I always have to follow Steve?
Because that's where you live.
Yes, I, uh...
It's also medical.
Uh, if we are talking about a voluntary recommendation of mask wearing, I, I am for that. I have nothing, I have no problem with that. Mandating is a whole nother story and a lot more discussion, I think, for us. And I don't even know if really that's a position that Austin should put them, that council should put ourselves in right now. I think that even the governor hasn't decided yet. We need to give it some time. Like Steve said, see how, how it works with the businesses. Let them do what they need to do now and reevaluate in a couple of weeks.
Councilmember...
Excuse me. I know it's not my turn, but before we, I'll be last. And before we get all around to me, I'm not sure that...
Laura, if you want this to be your turn, that's fine. But we're going around. We have to do that. So either you're last...
I understand. I understand.
We can't challenge every point.
But I feel like if you're a member of the general public and you looked at the agenda that was published yesterday, you have no idea what we're talking about because this was in addition today.
Right.
And so what, the motion that's on the agenda that we're talking about today is the City of Austin strongly recommending mask use to the public. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, so really at this time, you're wanting to hear from each of us on that? Because the discussion's kind of bleeding over into the mandate and I don't want to get people confused.
We can talk about, Laura, Laura, we, we're still going to be discussing this at the work session. I think like right now, I just wanted to provide kind of a path forward. Right now, you know, if you have a position and you want to state it, that's what I expect, that's what I expect. And that's what people are doing. Obviously, you may or may not change that in two weeks, but go ahead and finish your statement.
Right, right. I, I'm just saying, for the public, for somebody who's just watching this on Zoom or doesn't have all the materials that we have on our fingertips, what we're talking about and what we're going to vote on next is a city statement encouraging mask use. We are not going to vote on the mandate in the next few minutes.
That's correct. This is no mandate. We'll be talking about that at the work...
We're not going to be voting on the mandate at all tonight.
Yeah, we may...
We're there discussing it.
That, that's just what I wanted to, to clarify. Thank you.
Okay, and as long as we're on you, why don't you go ahead and finish if you were going to make a statement on this. You're up. Let me put it that way.
Thank you. Sorry to jump the line, everybody.
That's all right.
Uh, I just, I, there's so much interest and concern on this issue. I just wanted to be really clear to people. I am in, in favor of the resolution encouraging mask use 100%. And I do hope we get to talk about the mandate at the work session. I've had more public contact on this issue than any issue in my four years on council. And so, and it's running largely in favor of mask wear. So I have, I am fully in support of the motion before us. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Tom?
Councilmember Fisher.
I'm in favor of the resolution, but I really don't see the point of it. I mean, people either are going to wear masks or they're not at this point. Going by the emails that we all received, obviously, it's 85% of the population's for them. But come forward, I just don't think it's going to do anything.
Thank you, Paul.
Councilmember Baskin.
You know, I would mirror what a lot of folks have said. I am in favor of the resolution. I think that, you know, as leaders in the community, it's important for us to publicly I think that, you know, as leaders in the community, it's important for us to publicly state that we recommend that people wear face masks. I think a lot of the emerging scientific data is showing that this is a relatively low-cost, high-impact tool for us to help stem the disease, and look forward to obviously the discussion at the work session, because there's a lot of passionate folks on both sides around. You know, does a government mandate fit or not? And I think, you know, the next couple of weeks are going to tell us a lot here. But, you know, I mirror what Councilman King said, which is, hey, if we can start moving in the right direction, I think it puts us into a better place as a community. I don't know that anybody wants to do a government mandate, because personal choice certainly is important. At the same time, government has to help, you know, have public safety as well. And so I think this is a nice middle ground to say that absolutely, we recommend that people wear face masks. And as more and more businesses and people continue to make the choice to wear their face masks, I think we'll be in a better position as a community.
Councilmember Large Austin.
I would have to say that I am in favor of this resolution. I think it is good of us to encourage and strongly recommend mask use by the public. I guess I've been encouraged by the chief's recent informal poll showing almost 60% mask wear in most of the places that they surveyed. I think that the public is accepting of that and working towards that. I think when we see these larger retailers taking the initiative to require mask wear in their establishments, I think that's going to change what the public does when they're out and about in these groups. And I think the governor is also weighing it, so I mean, we may be superseded by any action that he may take. So I think this is a good action to take at this time while we work on anything further. So I would be in favor of this resolution.
Okay, before we pass the resolution, I just want to say I'm in favor of the resolution. I'm also in favor of a mask mandate, and I think two weeks we'll have a better picture on it. I'm not going to make my argument now, we can do that either at the work session or next week. With that, we need a.
There are members of the public on this.
Are there members of the public that want to weigh in?
Solely on the recommendation, not mandate, they may have.
Yeah, we're talking, if you want to weigh in on the recommendation or the resolution, we don't want to, if public's here, we're not going to have an argument on the mandate tonight. We don't have all the information we're going to have, we need two weeks for people to contact us. We want to see how the resolution, if it has any effect. So we will accept input on the resolution we're talking about. If you stop, start talking mandate, I'm going to cut you off. I won't cut you off, but we don't want you talking about the mandate. So who would, how do we do this? Tom, how do we let people talk?
Anne, can you see anybody raising their hand to you?
Jamie Risketall.
Jamie Risketall, we'll unmute you.
Jamie Risketall, you are up. Is Jamie there?
Yep, just hang on.
Just hang on a minute.
Jamie's flying around.
Hello?
Jamie Risketall, you're up.
Hi. I've emailed all the council members my concerns, and I've also spoken with a lot of my friends in the community. And I think their concern with this resolution is the idea of people trying to enforce it on you if you are not able to wear a mask.
That's not what this resolution.
This is only a recommendation to strongly urge people to wear masks.
Yeah, this is not requiring people to wear a mask.
Not enforceable.
We're not.
And I understand that, but the concern of the community that I've spoken to is that people are going to take it as more of a mandate than a resolution.
Okay, well, it's not a mandate, it's a resolution.
We'll be discussing the mandate at the work session.
Right, we'll be discussing the mandate at the work session, and before we pass it, it would be at another council meeting, which you would have an opportunity to make input again. But, you know, I just, I don't think council people know where they are on this, I'm not absolutely sure. So we need a couple of weeks, but this, all this does is it asks people very strongly to wear masks. Okay?
Yeah, I totally understand.
All right, thank you.
I just.
Anne, do you have anybody else with their hand up?
Nope.
Nobody else would like to make a comment?
Curtis.
All this, and I would like to.
Hang on, Curtis Sorenson.
Kurt, Curtis Sorenson.
On the recommendation to encourage mask wearing.
I just want to say I love what I'm hearing, let's give it some more time, I really like all of your ideas. Let's let them do a few weeks, see what the numbers look like, and then go from there. The main thing about all this COVID stuff is it's gone political, like every war does, and there's all kinds of stuff out there, so, you know, let's use our credible sources and make accurate, intelligent decision when it comes time. But I like what everybody's saying, let's go a couple of weeks, see what these places that are doing it, because that is their choice. And let's see how it comes out for them, see if it works, see if it doesn't. I mean, all we can do is give it time, there's all unknowns with this COVID stuff.
All right, thank you, Curtis, Kurt.
Thank you, yes.
Anne, anybody else hands up?
Sally.
Sally.
Sally, you're up.
Sally, I don't know your last name, but you're up if you're able. Sally? Sally, raise your hand if you're there, I can only see a few, yes, I see your hand up, but you're not coming through.
Okay, my name is Sally Gary, and I'm representing local public health, and I just wanted to say that we support this resolution 100%. There's so many things we don't know about COVID-19, but one of the things we do know is that wearing a mask is one way to prevent the spread. And one of the main reasons it's so important is because 30 to 45% of people who are spreading it don't have any symptoms. So that's one of the main reasons we support this.
Thank you, Sally, I agree with you. Anybody else?
Anybody else standing hands up?
Kimberly.
Kimberly, you're up.
Yeah, I, um, I actually work four days a week in Mankato where it's mandated. So I just have a couple of comments. First of all, it is kind of a, from the economic perspective, it is kind of a toll, because I work at a clothing store, and if someone comes in without a mask, we have to ask them to leave, so that, you know, that leaves us without a potential customer. And people forget them all the time, unless the store actually provides it for them, which fortunately for me, I work for a corporation that they can budget in masks for every single consumer that forgets them, but not everyone can do that. And, you know, we are seeing in the numbers and the sales, we're not making our weekly sales, we're not making our monthly sales, because we have to turn people away. So I do think that's something that we have to take into consideration, that it has taken an economic toll, I think, for a lot of businesses. There's a smoothie place next door that's not doing so well, because no one's buying smoothies, obviously, if they can't drink it with their mask on. So I do think that that's something that we have to take into consideration as well.
Thank you, Kimberly, is it Kimberly, Kimberly, thank you.
Anybody else stand?
Anyone else?
Anybody else?
That appears to be it, Mayor.
Okay, so with that, we need a resolution on this.
I'll move that we pass the resolution to create a resolution on mask wear.
Any, is there a second?
Second.
Anybody want to say anything from the council? Second chance, all right. Mr. Dankert.
I just want to say that I think, you know, with this resolution, it's going to be really important to make it really clear what this resolution is, and to encourage continued discussion.
Good point, I wish the Herald was here, but I'm assuming he's on. Oh, okay, Mike here, okay, all right, we're good. And I'm sure, I'm sure he'll do a good job on making that clear. Mike, did you have any questions on this? If not, we'll move forward. Okay, so.
Motion by Councilmember King, seconded by Councilmember Austin, recommending face covering usage to combat COVID-19, and I vote in favor of such. Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
All right, I want to thank everybody that dialed in to talk about this, and I'm assuming in two weeks you're going to have another opportunity, unless the governor does something first, which is a very good chance. Anne, can you have something?
Are we having the work session?
Yes.
Yeah, we're having a work session tonight.
So the people that are on, you should stay on for the work session.
Yeah, if you want to stay on, we're having the work session right here, and if you want to add something you haven't said, we'd be more than happy to listen to you. Are there any citizens here that want to address the council on anything that they haven't addressed it on? Honorary council member, Obalabala, I haven't seen you for a while, I don't think he's up there, is he?
I think he's in the hospital with his new baby, which seems like probably the more important spot to be.
Okay, oh, come on. Yeah, yeah.
Priorities, come on.
This and this, that's better than this. With that, we'll go with reports and recommendations. Tom, why don't you go around for me?
Reports and recommendations, Councilmember Waller.
I have nothing.
King.
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Pashusta.
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Fisher.
I have nothing.
Councilmember Baskin.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Councilmember Helly.
I just want to congratulate honorary council member, Obalabala, and his fiancee, on their daughter being born. And then I also want to remind folks that the primary is coming up for City of Austin positions. Mark your calendar, plan to vote on August 11th, or you can vote now, either by mail or in person. You don't have to wait, and I'll vote on this on primary day, but you should be making your plans now for how you want to vote, whatever works best for you.
Thank you, Laura.
Councilmember Large Austin.
I have nothing, Your Honor.
Mayor Steen.
Greg, do we have any, do you have anything?
Only thing I want to add is the bonding bill, it's kind of covered by Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities. We were in part in the House release of their bonding proposal, so we continue to monitor that closely for our wastewater treatment plant. Otherwise, I don't have anything from anyone else.
No report? Okay, I have nothing, it's all about masks right now, and we'll be talking about that in five minutes. So with that, we need a motion to adjourn till Monday, August 3rd, 2020, at 5:30 in council chambers.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, Your Honor, we'd request a five-minute recess to finalize the date.
Okay, if for the civilians out there, we're going to take a five-minute recess, and if you want to hang on, we'll be right back, they just have to do some adjustments here.
All right, Marty, we've got five minutes.
Well, you got as long as you need. I've got a string, I've been trying to melt the whole shirt's coming apart, I was trying to melt during the meeting, and I thought nobody told the police we were going to try and start a fire. Yeah. I can feel another one.
It's the same one. You're going to be.
Take it in the bathroom.
If you pull it.
It turns out just nothing.
If you pull it, the whole thing will come off. I could have it for there. All right.
I have a picture of it.
Here, here. It's like if you just pull them like that, it keeps on rattling.
Your honor, I've been here saying, but you know.
That's okay, I don't care.
I wondered what that, it sounded like a lighter.
Oh, yeah, I mean, it's like everything, this thing is ready for the dustbin, I think.
I know, the one that you needed perfect, and it's not. Or even remotely perfect.
Is it the one that happened in my office?
Yeah.
I've been ordering it for eight seconds, and it was recently.
I know, I just noticed it was married, or it looked like.
That's what I told him earlier. Well, for what could probably, it was pretty painful, well, to see it at work session. You know, based on the times, and where cases may go, you know, I think it's still over now, we may get something from the governor. Will you give, have a mall county? You're going to give the mall county, after you're done with all your numbers, huh?